Okay, folks, good evening, welcome. This is the Red Hook Town Board meeting. Wednesday, July 27th, 2022. Would you be kind enough to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. I hope everyone is enjoying this summer, the very hot summer, and hopefully staying healthy. Tonight, we will review for the folks at home what the agenda is. We have our public hearing on the contract renewal with Spectrum, and I'm sorry to say, while we are very close, we are not there yet. Still one or two things to iron out. So we will be having a motion to extend to our next meetings, a public hearing. And for the regular agenda, we'll be discussing the Housing Committee and some ideas that Julia and Jacob have on formulating that committee. We also will be discussing and setting up public hearing on a local law establishing truck routes and weight limits, essentially designating routes for through roads for trucks. Trucks will be allowed, all kinds of trucks will be allowed to make deliveries and do work and so on and so forth on all of our local roads, but we've been increasingly getting a lot of calls and correspondence related to trucking operations on the local roads and the impacts that that's having to the roads and quality of life. We are going to update our employee handbook, which it's been a while since we've done that, to conform to some of the new New York State laws, as well as our union contract. And then we'll have our board and committee report, so we don't anticipate this to be a very long meeting this evening, but you never know how that goes. Okay, very good announcements. I don't really have any announcements, except to say that I know that it's approaching August and we have our September events, Arts Scrabble Day and Tivoli Street Painting. I see that Tivoli Street Painting has been designated this year for September 24th. And so we want to let you know that. On some less positive news, our very popular and successful Community Choice Aggregation Program is coming to sort of a short-lived conclusion on our second contract after a year or so. If you've been following along, we joined with other municipalities and legal action to try and get the energy supplier to perform the remainder of the contract. And you'll be receiving some correspondence from Hudson Valley Community Power. Very disappointing what that energy supply company Columbia Utilities has done during the course of this contract. It's been very popular and also very successful. I think there was a calculation that in the last year or so, the average resident has saved somewhere between $300 and $400 by being a member of the Community Choice Aggregation. So we want to let you know, keep your eye out for some correspondence coming your way and possibly from Central Hudson as well. Okay, very good. Why don't we just Katie, if you would be kind enough to to read the public hearing notice?
I'm actually gonna read it tonight, Robert. Yeah, I'm okay. I'm much better.
Okay, great.
Okay, let me just bring it up. Notice of Extended Public Hearing, Town of Red Hook. Please take notice that a public hearing extended from June 14th, 2022, and further extended from July 12th, 2022, will be held by the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook on July 27th, 2022, at 7:35 PM local time to hear all interested persons on a proposed franchise renewal agreement between the Town of Red Hook and Spectrum Northeast LLC, an indirect subsidiary of the Charter Communications Incorporated. Spectrum has submitted an application to construct and operate a cable television system within the Town of Red Hook and has requested a grant by the Town Board of a non-exclusive franchise. The Town Board has the authority to grant said franchise pursuant to Town Law Section 64.7 after holding a duly noticed public hearing that affords the public the opportunity to provide comment. The Town Board has determined that pursuant to 6 NYCRR 617.5C7, the proposed franchise renewal agreement constitutes a type-two action as defined under the State Environmental Quality Review Act, CICRA. The meeting will be held via teleconference or video conference. Please refer to the meeting agenda to be posted on the town website at www redhook.org, listing the specific link which will allow the public to view and listen to the proceedings live, which is expected to be available at www.pandatv23.org. Click on Watch Live. Project documents will be posted with the meeting agenda on the town's website. All interested persons will be given an opportunity to be heard as follows. One, the public is encouraged to submit written comments by email or telephone in advance of the hearing to townclerk@redhook.org and 845-758-4606 by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please note franchise renewal agreement in the subject. Two, written comments may be dropped in the town's drop box in advance of the hearing at the Town Hall, 7340 South Broadway, Red Hook, New York 12571, by 4 o'clock PM the day of the hearing. Please observe the recommendations of the CDC regarding distancing and use of masks. All comments so received in advance of the hearing will be noted in the hearing record. Three interested persons may register in advance to participate remotely via Zoom. To register, please send your email, name, and telephone number to townclerk@redhook.org by 4 o'clock PM on the day of the hearing. All reasonable accommodations will be made for persons with disabilities. In such a case, please notify the town clerk in advance at the above address or by phone 845-758-4606 so that arrangements can be made. By order of the Town Board of the Town of Red Hook dated July 12th, 2022, Deanna Cochran, Town Clerk, Town of Red Hook.
Thanks, Deanna. Appreciate that. Okay, at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Is there anybody who would like to speak on this matter? Okay. If not, again, just for the folks at home, a reminder that we have a contract with cable company now Spectrum. It's a contract that provides not only the ability for them to conduct services within the municipality, but also for us to receive 5% of the revenue as franchise fees to help balance our budget, and we put a fair amount of the money into the public access channel, of which they are badly needing of equipment to get back up and running. So that is the relationship between what services they perform and what dollars we receive. So hearing no public comments, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the public hearing to August 29th. And for the folks at home, we are going to have one meeting in the month of August, August 29th. And the public hearing for 7:35. Does that work, folks? If so, I'd like to make a motion that we continue the public hearing until that date and time. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Herman. All in favor? Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Thank you very much. Okay. So the first item on the agenda is more discussion on a proposed housing committee for the Town of Red Hook. And Jacob, Julia, which one of you would like to sort of walk us through the recommendations so we can have some discussion?
I guess I can do it. So we talked about housing a little bit at previous meetings, and Julia and I had to talk about some of the goals the board is looking for, and a little a little bit about kind of what the composition of this sort of committee might be, and the mission of the committee as well. So I guess I'll start with the mission and kind of some of the goals, kind of the the work that we would anticipate this committee doing, and then a little bit of an overview of what we picture the composition being. So I think that the the primary mission is to identify housing concerns. I know we've talked about affordable housing being the one that's top of mind right now. But also looking, you know, in the future, if there are other issues that arise, whether that's for affordability or just for things that might be helpful for homeowners or renters, kind of identifying those and putting some work together to help out those who are living in our community. The idea is to provide housing education, to pursue opportunities for affordable housing in the town. And then part of the mission is seeking a balance of housing opportunities, so ensuring that we remain a vibrant community, presenting opportunities for individuals and families to live in the community, including low and moderate income residents. So some of the things we would anticipate this committee doing would be meeting monthly as a full committee, and also working between those monthly meetings and small groups to track the town's existing housing stock and needs. That includes rental units and a number of other options. Maintaining awareness of what the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals meetings look like and what actions are being taken there. Reviewing the town code provisions regarding related to housing and making suggestions to the Town Board with respect to, you know, clarifying some of those, streamlining for easier development of affordable housing units. We talked a little bit about identifying existing and developing issues for those living in the community. Seeking grant opportunities, if there are opportunities for the town to improve or develop affordable housing. Presenting those opportunities to the Town Board, making suggestions for grant applications. Keeping aware of current trends in housing, specifically with affordable housing successes and innovations. Looking primarily at rural communities, but if there are other opportunities, we'd look to that as well. Developing education materials, like I was talking about before. I think specifically looking for renters, first-time homebuyers, and then also for energy efficiency for homeowners. Providing monthly reports to the town on their work, and then an annual report as well. So kind of working month to month and then looking back and what the goals are for the next year. So those are the that's sort of the work that we talked about them kind of taking on, at least initially. As far as organization, we talked about there being nine members of the committee, including two members that are designated as liaisons to the villages. So kind of working with the villages to designate that person. It doesn't have to be a trustee, but somebody that would be in communication with the trustees from each village and the mayors to make sure that they're included in the work the town is doing. And then there's a little bit about recruitment as well and sort of the relevant experience and skills we'd be looking for as well. But I think that's a that's most of the main points for an overview. And I guess I'll turn it back over to the members of the board to provide some you know, input and feedback and, you know, maybe other things you were looking for as a part of this committee.
Thanks, Jacob. Julia, did you want to add anything before we chime in?
I think that was a really great summary of what we envisioned, and I would also be curious for feedback. Obviously, you know, we see this committee being very much advisory to the board and really doing a lot of information gathering, particularly in the early stages.
Great. Well, who would like to chime in? Bill, Christine?
Why, the quick question before comments for Jacob or Julia. Regarding the village, the the wreck, the person from each village, does that limit? Does that limit the the group to only having one person, say, from Tivoli and one person from the Village of Red Hook, or because there could be multiple people from those two villages that are, you know, highly experienced and would be suitable for what we want them to do? And I would, and I just wasn't sure how you envisioned it.
Yeah, I think that, and Julia, feel free to jump in as well. I think that I wasn't envisioning this being a limit necessarily. I was thinking more just ensuring that the respective governments from each of the villages has some, you know, somebody there who's communicating with them as well for this. So you know, obviously, the villages are also within the town. So if we have people who have skills or experiences, it'd be really helpful. I wouldn't want to limit that.
Thank you.
Bill, did you have comments?
I have a few. The, I have two, I have a few minor things that are sort of questions in the writing, but I have two things that are not on here. One is, and it relates to the length of time this committee will sit. I, I think we would be wise to have a sunset provision for this committee. If the purpose of the committee is to provide advice and recommendations to the Town Board for solutions to what is an existing problem, which is a lack of affordable housing and a lack of housing in general. I, my personal experience has been that sometimes hard deadlines that are tied to sunset provisions sometimes get deliverables in a more timely and workable fashion. And so I'm not saying we couldn't extend a committee, you know, and continue to do work. I, but I, I think from my perspective, I'd like to see, you know, stagger three-year appointments as suggesting a nine-year lifespan, which I think some of us won't be around necessarily for to be on the board. And I think if we want to get some things done, it might be helpful to have a shorter period. I don't know what that period is, but but I think it would be a good idea to have some kind of sunset. And that's just, you know, grist for the mill for discussion. Another thing I think that would be really important is our community is very different than many other communities, and it took 10 years to get the Centers, or nine to 10 years to get Centers for Green Space completed. And it's what makes our town so wonderful is that we went to the trouble to change our zoning, preserve our farms and our green space. And many things that are sort of standard kinds of activities to help communities with affordable housing probably are in direct conflict with what our longer-term vision for the town was in that Centers for Green Space. And so I think the the trick will be to navigate that divide, and I think it would be really wise to have somebody, if there's anybody still out there who worked very closely on the development of that Centers for Green Space, be a part of this team so that they can help. It's not just having historical perspective. It's it's having sort of the perspective of what was envisioned and what was actually implemented so that the goals and what we seek to achieve, you know, strikes the right balance. So it's just, it's something to think about. I think it's important. I have just a few minor things in the I, I think in your mission statement, which, and by the way, I want to thank both of you for really doing a bang-up job, a good, detailed, thorough, you've probably, you did a lot of work on this. You clearly did a lot of thinking on this. But in the mission, I think you probably should have some language about the development of of recommendations for the Town Board to implement strategies, you know, to to achieve these goals. I did have a question in the second bullet. We talked about starter homes. I'm not sure how that's defined because a starter home for one person might not be. And if there's maybe a better definition or a way to describe that so that it's less ambiguous, it might be, might be helpful because for me, I just don't, I mean, I have an idea what a starter home was for me, but it could be very different for other people. In the fourth bullet, it says, review Town Code provisions relate to housing and make suggestions to Town Board respect to clarity, consolidation, and you say streamlining for easier development. I would take those three words out, and I'll tell you why. It suggests a predisposition for what the outcome is going to be. And I don't think you need it because because there could be, that could be one of, or that could be a part of it. But there could also be longer-term things that the board, that the committee comes up with. So I, I think it boxes us in a little bit by having that, and I would just leave my recommendation to remove those three words. And then the last thing I had was in one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, oh, the, in the seventh bullet, you talk about looking at other rural communities in New York, and it says neighboring states. I'm not so sure why you'd want to limit it to neighboring states. There could be other states like Ohio and other places. There are communities that, because we do have an unusual community. We're close to a large city. We have a smaller arts college embedded within us. We have some sort of, sort of unique qualities, but there are others out there that that have those qualities. And maybe like places like Oberlin in Ohio. So I, I'm not sure, you just say, or other, you know, other states. Rather than limiting yourself to neighboring states, and there may be good things in the neighboring states too, but I just wouldn't want to close yourself off in that regard. So those are my comments, and I really do appreciate the opportunity to comment. And I'm looking forward to the work that the that the committee does. And I actually have somebody who lives in Tivoli who I think would be, I'd like to recommend, I have to get him to agree to do it, but he's a person who is a professor in public and planning, urban planning at a major university. He, it's something he knows a lot about, and I think he cares a lot about Red Hook and these issues. So he might be somebody who's interested. So anyway, thank you so much. I'm going to mute myself now.
Thanks for the feedback, Bill. I guess, I don't know, does it make sense to talk about the things you brought up, or I don't know if Christine or Robert have things that they want to?
Let's hear from Christine first.
Thanks. I also want to thank Julia and Jacob for putting this together and, you know, taking on the responsibility for what is a big issue for our town to get, to get some movement in that area. Most of, you know, generally, I like the ideas. I like the structure ideas of the committee. You know, like Bill was saying, I have some, you know, sort of small thoughts on, you know, maybe making the mission a little clearer. You know, I'm not, I mean, I'm not necessarily sure, you know, we need monthly reports, but you know, it's not necessarily a bad idea, I guess. So overall, I'm just very happy that we are getting started on this. And, you know, I think Bill's comment about making sure that we don't undermine centers and green spaces is important. But I also want to make sure that we are, you know, looking at all the options and open to new ideas or new ways of looking at things. Like when we came up with Centers and Green Space, that was a very new approach, a different and creative approach to, you know, planning for a community's growth. And it would be great if we had that same sort of thinking or same sort of openness and approach to this thing, to this issue.
Thanks, Christine. I'll just add a few comments and echo. This is really terrific, what you've put together, and very much appreciate your leading this this effort, both of you. I would agree with Bill in the sense that I think it might make sense to establish the committee and all nine members for perhaps two years. I think one year would be too short, and then see how it, how it's going for everyone and see how an ongoing committee might have a slightly different mission. And see if that's what we in fact would like to have is a committee that lives on. I think that might be a very good idea. But but initially to start, and I think we've done this with other committees, I think Energy Committee reminds me two-year terms. We have a lot of these committees like that, so that I would recommend that. I like the categories you have for recruitment. Perhaps the Centers and Greenspace concern might be in that land use planning description individual there. I would add, though, that I think it's very important that we have an individual who has firsthand experience with some housing insecurity in our community. Somebody who has can give us the kind of insight that you only get from being in that position. I know there's been at least one individual who has some of that history who's perhaps interested in joining the committee. And I would also say that as you invite guests and certainly you want to have folks who are familiar with the housing programs that exist not only statewide, but here in Dutchess County. Other than that, I would say probably I would beef up the language on energy efficiency, housing types. You know, I, I think we want to take a look at requirements for for new construction because we're all about sustainability. And so let's take a look at that before we go ahead and encourage a lot more building. Let's make sure it's the, the kind of clean energy future that we want to have. Other than that, I think you've done a terrific job, guys. All right, Jacob.
Thanks. Julie, I don't know if you had anything that you wanted to to jump in with?
Well, probably I'm going to duplicate things you were going to say anyway, but I really appreciate all the feedback from from the board. I think those are all great suggestions, and you know, either the sort of small wording changes, which I think makes sense, and then some of the broader concerns. Obviously, the, someone with, it would be great to have someone on the committee with sort of a a long background of being involved in the planning efforts of the town. I hope we can find someone like that who would be interested in participating. I think also Jacob and I talked about the fact that at certain points in their work, it probably makes sense for this committee to have access to a planner who is familiar with our code and with the history of how that code got established. I don't know exactly how we would arrange that relationship, but we do think that would be important at some points. And my personal feeling is that there probably is an ongoing need for a standing committee on this topic in the same way that we have an energy committee or a conservation advisory committee or a senior services committee. You know, I think it is, it is an issue in the town that will not be going away. But if, you know, if folks who have had experience with the establishment of committees in the past think it makes sense to begin with sort of a charter term and and take it from there, then I'm open to that as well. And I do think to Bill's point that it may make sense to create a sort of a time-bound deliverable that the committee should deliver to the board. You know, a set of recommendations or a review of the code that is separate from the sort of ongoing existence of the committee, but is you know, has has a deadline to it and gets us moving on this topic. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think that I agree with Julie about that specifically, and I think that it's a good idea to have maybe in terms of like the initial ask for the committee, like I don't mind setting it up for like a tier like pilot thing or and giving them, you know, these are the things we're hoping to have at the end of the two years. But I do think this is something that's going to be valuable to the community to have on an ongoing basis, right? If we have a group of people who are working on these issues and developing some expertise, I think we're probably all in agreement. These issues aren't going to go away forever at the end of the two years, right? It's not going to be something that's going to be solved in that timeframe. So I would hate to get people that are invested in this and spending a lot of time putting the work in and then saying, okay, like now that we're done with this one. Putting the work in and then saying, okay, like now that we're done with this one project. Like go away until we try to tap you again the next time it feels like it's a crisis, right? So I think that. To me at least, I wouldn't mind setting it up and saying, you know. We have this committee set up and here's what we're hoping for. Like at on a deadline for what we're hoping for at the end of the two year term, but I would also. Still kind of push to keep it something that's, you know, continuing. And I think that Bill, when you said it was like a nine year thing, I think there might be some. Maybe it wasn't clear in this. When I said, when it says staggered three year appointments, we picture that being like on a rolling basis, right? So basically like. People would come up every year like. On a three year thing. It wouldn't be like three years, three years, three years. It'd be, you know, we'd be. Um kind of saying, you know, each year like three members would come up and say, okay, you're. Good to continue, or if we want to replace somebody, then that's an opportunity to do that. Kind of like we do with every other committee for reorg.
My math skills aren't the best, so I, you know.
Under that scenario, you would have somebody, uh you'd have three people appointed for just one year. I I think perhaps that's not a great idea either. So would it make sense to just compromise on let's establish the committee nine people a two year term and then not speak to the issue of. Whether it's an ongoing committee, let's see how it goes, play it by ear and let's hope it's a committee that. People want to stay on and we will we want to to keep in fun. Does that make sense? Or do you want to you want to stick with the three three year stagger?
I think that like keeping everybody at least for the first two years and then doing that review. After that time period in terms of like continuing and like, you know, if we. Need to replace somebody or somebody steps down, doing the appointments there on the terms, I think makes sense. Um and maybe, you know, at the end of that is when you make that decision, but um. Yeah, like I think that. I think at least two years is, you know, like the bare minimum of what we should. Give this group to start and then in terms of the ongoing nature of it, maybe we can revisit, you know, around that time.
Well, I I was gonna say. Well, of course, as we know, it's getting, um, you know, somewhat more difficult to recruit volunteers to some of the committees that we have. So. You know, going with a two year. Commitment and ask for a two year commitment may help in that regard. But realistically, I think probably we want to start with with maybe a three year window because. You know, we did just put the grant in for um master, you know, comprehensive plan. Um and so a lot of what this committee is doing could be very valuable to that and that's may start later than this committee starts. So, you know, and and maybe we can get, you know, five or six people who will, you know. Start to say they'll do three years and then we ask a couple of people if they'll do two years. So we have some staggering, you know, going on or something. But, you know, I I do think realistically, it's probably. Good to have it up and running for three years just because of the timing to um work with the um comprehensive plan update. Which, you know, we have to hopefully we'll get this grant, but you know, we do have to do one. So.
I agree with that, and I think there will just be a learning curve for the committee and how it works. You know, as a group and um, you know, people will come in with different levels of existing expertise on the topic.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think we're gonna want to have opportunities for, you know, other people from the community to participate as well, like being able to set up. Opportunities for the committee to invite other community members in to, you know, talk about some of the topics. So I think that. I think I like the idea of having a little bit longer timeframe where we can do the comprehensive plan piece and then also. Like Julia said, give them an opportunity to come up to speed for some of these things. It's going to take a little bit of time to recruit. It's like. You know, all that kind of coming together, I think will be. You know, I I I agree, it would be beneficial to have a little bit more time, but also I'm I'm advocating for it being an ongoing committee, so.
Which I don't think anybody's arguing against. I I think we're just talking about, let's try it out. It's probably going to be what we all want for it to be continuing, but you know, sometimes. That in and of itself can be a deterrent for people joining when they don't feel like there's, you know, the potential to to exit.
Right. What is it exactly you're asking me to do and how long? But you know, I think it's important that we just get started.
Yeah, right. So are you recommending Christine then maybe out of the nine, five be appointed for two year terms and four be three or vice versa? Is that what you were?
That's what I, yeah, that's what I was thinking. We could do that and. You know. Might, you know, everybody on the committee. Is going to have an important important role to play.
Yeah.
Um but you know, it whoever's the chairperson of the committee might be someone. We want to ask to take on the role for three years, you know, so there's continuity.
Right.
Um and an understanding of where the start was and what the deliverals deliverable is going to be at the end.
And your liaisons, I would imagine you will want your liaison as you have recommendations leaving the committee. There's some implementation follow up. So maybe five for three years and four for two years.
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, I think that sounds fine. And then as we get, like I said before, as we get closer to the end, what like of that? That first window, I think we can see where we're at with the committee if people are interested in continuing and we want to. You know, configure it so that it so it lines up, so it's not like, you know, three and two kind of like. Falling off for some reason, but I think that hopefully we'll be able to recruit people that are interested in kind of working on this. You know.
Yeah.
For that time period. I think that having, I I I think the feedback about having something with like a deliverable ask. With a deadline will be helpful to to be able to say like, here's what we're looking for to start and then. You know, hopefully there are opportunities for more things to work on after that, but I think it's going to be good to have that clarity to say these are the sorts of things that we're. Hoping to have at the end of the next couple of years. And maybe that's kind of the recruitment thing.
And one of the reasons and I I'm not against having continued committee, let me make it clear, but one of the reasons I was suggesting. A sunset is it will require the group to prioritize. What they think is most important for the town in providing the board recommendations so that the board can get to work. This is. You know, I view this as a critically important issue for the town and so. Uh I I would like, I I'm, that's why I said I'm excited to see it going, but I I, you know, it's important that we start getting some deliverables. And if if we if we know that there's hard deadlines. Um the group can decide, you know, this is what's most important to us or, you know, obviously there's there's some things are easier to do than others. Uh but it would be great to get some accomplishments in uh in the next, you know, two, three years. And get some momentum, if you will, uh in that process and as as those start to roll in. Uh the group gets uh more research is done, they become more literate on the issues. And then I think, you know, good things will happen.
Yeah, I agree with Bill. I know that, um, you know, we've heard. Anecdotally from the planning board and zoning boards that they're looking for. Us to do additional work as it relates to the zoning code, accessory structures. Um ADU, so on and so forth. So, you know, I think we want to be. Uh you know, attentive to to that and and try to see if we can get some things cranking. Um because it doesn't, it doesn't have to be one comprehensive document, you know. Um we can continue, um you know, progress. Um. Uh we've already bounced around some ideas. Other municipalities are working on this issue as well. Um so, yeah, let's let's uh let's go for it, I say. Any other thoughts? Shall we? Um before we go ahead, I think we can do a uh a motion to. Establish this committee tonight if we feel like we're ready to do so. And um, you know, we would ask you, Jacob and Julia to come in and, you know, make any tweaks to the. Mission statement and descriptions that you've uh brought to us. Uh taking into account some feedback that you think would be appropriate.
Yeah, I took a a bunch of notes as everybody was giving feedback, so I can incorporate that and um recirculate. Kind of a version with some. You know, with an edited version of that. So, but I I agree, I'd I'd be happy to, you know, kind of establish it tonight and then, you know. There's no harm in providing more um direction as we start constituting it, so. So I'd make a motion to establish the committee if that seems okay unless other people have other things they wanted to.
Were you gonna add a a membership of nine members, five of which will have three year terms? Um four of which will have two year terms? Are you gonna make that specific? Okay.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Terrific. Julia, would you like to second that?
I would be delighted to second.
Okay, very good. Um any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Christine Kane?
Hi.
Bill Hamel.
Hi.
Myself, I thank you all very much. This is terrific news. I thank you both very much and folks. If you're watching at home, everybody has thoughts about housing. Um it seems to be a hobby of everybody's, right? Real estate and housing, so um we want to hear from you. Um so that we get all types of uh opinions and inputs and ideas. Okay. Um moving right along. We are on agenda item number two. And I think I mentioned this earlier, um we've had. A increasing number of complaints, um uh activities and appropriate. Um levels of truck traffic off on our local roads. Um we all have experienced waiting at the light there. Um in Red Hook Village and uh I'm sure uh trucks and tractor trailers are no uh. Uh no stranger to to that weight sometimes. However, uh we've been noticing an increasing pattern of them diverting. And uh driving through um our rural local roads and we received um. Um complaints and calls mostly. About this activity and because it affects not only the maintenance and wear and tear. Safety issues, trucks that are inappropriately sized for many of these local roads, residential roads. Roads that we hope to encourage in multi uh modal use. Um and uh certainly affecting quality of life uh for the folks at home. I will. Let you know that I'm one of the most recent complaints. Just a few weeks ago, I spoke to. Uh one of our residents who reported that there were eighty. Uh uh trucks that went by that day. Now, I don't know how they counted eighty, but. I think you get you get the message um on a residential road with no um. Um not appropriately on one of our county or state roads. So what we have done. Um is proposed what um other communities have, which is establishing. Truck routes um within our township. We can do so on both state and county roadways and not on state highways. We are, depending upon how you look at it, blessed with state highways. I would argue sometimes we don't feel blessed to have state highways. Go through our community, but we have um several opportunities for heavy truck traffic. Um to get um within our township and through our township. What local law C does is establish those roads that are appropriate for trucks. For example. One of the county roads that we are saying is not appropriate for heavy truck through road traffic is Linden Avenue. Why? Because Linden Avenue is. Mostly residential, but importantly, is going to be the location for the crossing. From Rec Park East to Rec Park West and I will tell. Uh the folks at home, the town board members now know that we found out just the other day that we were successful. In our one hundred thousand dollar grant application to establish. A uh safer way for folks to exit by foot and by bike. Um from Rec Park, the northern parking lot. And we'll have a crossing over Linden to get over to what we refer to as Rec Park West and the trails. That uh are now established over there. And so um what this law would do is of course allow every truck. That's making a delivery or doing um construction work. For example, the cement truck has to go to the new house being built on the local road. Um all of those activities are are permitted. Um what is not permitted is to utilize those roads when you they are in fact not conducting business on those roads. That they will do what almost all uh companies do anyway as a matter of courtesy. And in some cases, law, which is to use the appropriate highways for these activities. And so local law C. Um demands chapter one thirty one vehicle and traffic. Um which includes provisions for the establishment of a truck route system on certain highways in the town of Red Hook. And regulates um trucks of ten thousand pounds. Above that are not doing business on those roadways. And this is part of a larger effort, obviously, in order to make our community safer and more conducive to. Other activities. Um besides just driving vehicles on these roads, biking, for example. And so. We have established as part of the local law, the appropriate roadways. Would be the state highways, which we can't regulate anyway. That's nine and nine G, one ninety nine. Um and then going east west, um Spring Lake Road, as we know, um Spring Lake Road is the. Um location of our one um water uh uh facility. And um uh the Curly Corners, uh County Route seventy eight, running east and west. And uh this last one, Lasher, you know, it's a good question whether or not Lasher is necessary as a truck route. Um I would say we should take a look at that. Um potentially and and discuss that with our colleagues up in Columbia County. Um I think we have provided enough east west. Um uh you know, opportunity for trucks. Um but that's something that we we may want to take a look at. Um in the future. So what we have, and I have discussed this by the way with um Duchess County. And so we would obviously um. Uh send to them for their input as well and and do to. We have prepared a um seeker. And let's see if we can get that apart one. Uh Chris, did you want to speak to the seeker documents? I know that our engineers prepared these, but.
Yeah, that was prepared by Brandy. Um and as she pointed out, um she's described the action and then for the purposes of the first part of the part one. Uh because this is a local law that is set of action, um you identified that and then you go on to consider what the potential impacts are. So um she has just prepared drafts for your review at this point. Um you can uh you, what you would want to do is review the the. First part, and that's what the resolution setting a hearing would uh approve. And then the part two and three you would review. Um at your next uh meeting.
Right.
Okay.
And again, the description of the proposed action in. Um the part one of the EAF is implementation of the local law. To establish truck routes for vehicles in excess of ten thousand pounds. On certain state and county roads in the town. Um the local law provides exceptions, as I mentioned earlier, deliveries, maintenance and service of infrastructure. Emergency services and school buses, all of which would be allowed to uh use. Um these these uh these law, these roads rather. Um the objective of the local laws to preserve the condition of and reduce required maintenance of town roads due to impacts from heavy vehicles. And to preserve scenic and rural roads in the town. And there have been several studies that speak to the issue of. Um uh the weights of um uh trucks and um the impact that they have on the maintenance and of course. Our roads are paid for by taxpayer dollars, whether they are local, state or federal dollars.
And Robert, uh, then you have, would you go go a little bit farther? You have a C A F as part of that initial um preparation? It's so because, I'm sorry.
No, 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 I was just gonna say what you were gonna say, but would you please?
Because this is uh potentially involving areas that are within your L W R P. Um, the resolution would provide for referral to the planning board for their comments and review of the L W R P. Impact and uh the C A F is a part of that process. So you, if you keep paging down, you'll see a C A F. So this part two and part three are. Just uh drafts for your consideration at the next meeting. And um, so they're just really there in advance. So I think you have um in your. Uh, in your proceedings, I think maybe is after this you have a C A F. Yes.
There it is.
After the part three and you're keep paging through. Okay.
Yes.
Yep. There you go. So that's the C A F. It's a form that's used as part of that referral to the planning board.
That's correct. And one of the involved roads would be River Road, so it's not included as a truck group. In this, both London and um.
Right, but nine G.
Nine G, yeah, nine G's included.
Yeah, I'm I'm just mentioning.
Correct.
Roads, the roads that are in the L W R P and nine G, of course, is also in the um. And and we've heard, you know, over the years, lots of uh lots of input from residents. Um, about the truck traffic on River Road. And of course, since then. River Road has been designated the Empire State Trail. And um, there have been traffic calming measures. That have been implemented in order to slow. Um, the uh speeds on River Road and encourage. Um, use of that road by other than vehicles. So is there any questions about this before we take up our resolution to set the public hearing? Which now would be. On August twenty-ninth. At seven forty P M. Let me get to that resolution. Sorry if you're watching at home, getting a little bit. Busy there. Okay, Dan, and do you have uh the resolution number for this?
This will be forty-five.
Forty-five. Thank you, Katie. Folks, are we ready to entertain this resolution to set the public hearing and get some input? Okay, so it's resolution number forty-five, dated July twenty-seventh. Establishing a date for a public hearing regarding the adoption by the town board of the town of Red Hook. Of local law C proposed regarding the establishment of a truck route system on certain highways within the township. And I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Bill Ham. Um, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
And Jacob Test?
Hi.
Very good. Okay, so that's August twenty-ninth, seven forty P M. And within. Um, the um. Resolution, it acknowledges our secret review. Um, L W R P and the C A F. And we uh find that it's consistent with the the comprehensive plan. Okay, um, at this point, we shall move on to some other business. Uh, as I mentioned. We have to update. Our. Well. Let's see if we get. It's update our handbook. To reflect changes. In New York State, um, sexual harassment regulations. In fact, there was just a another uh requirement. Um, to add. Uh, an eight hundred number. Um, to publicize that as well. So let's get to um updates. Also, we are. Updating the employee handbook to reflect. Elements of the new uh agreement with the union. And most of the changes, I think I mentioned, um, sexual harassment, most of the changes, um. As they relate to the employees have to do with. Uh, the healthcare benefit section um for the folks at home. Um, for a little background. Um, many years ago, the town adopted a benefits package that at the time was um extremely. Um, generous because the the costs of those benefits were uh reasonable in nature. Um, the town of Red Hook is one of the last municipalities. Um, within the Hudson Valley to uh move away from one hundred percent. Um, coverage uh payment uh for employees of uh healthcare and um. Uh, co-pays and deductibles. And uh we were able to reach agreement. Uh, with the union on some uh some cost sharing associated with that. And so, um, this now updates uh the handbook to reflect that. And so, um. Those are the main changes in the handbook. And obviously, we'll continue to look at this. And update it. Uh, as time goes on, um, town board members, do you have any questions in practice before we go ahead and we. Entertain the resolution number forty-six? Okay, hearings none. Upperizing an amendment to the employee handbook of the town of Red Hook and I so move. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Jay. Uh, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
And I think that's Bill Hamel, yes?
Yes, I.
Thanks very much, Bill. Okay, very good. Moving right along. Boarding committee reports. And not to look at the screen, you will get nauseous like that while I scroll through. Who's first off with? We have a water board um report, don't we, Bill Hamel? There we go. Bill, would you like to give that report?
Modern term. Short, um, the most important thing to report is that well number two. The pump and the motor have been replaced as well as some other repairs that needed to be done. And it is now, as of last week. Back up and running. Um, but I am glad to say that, you know, there was never any shortage of water with just one well running. So, you know, our water supply is excellent, but it was important that we get the second well running as well. And that's now done.
Terrific. Very good. Thank you very much. Um, interesting on the water test requirements, Bill. You've been following that we have our P O P F O S and O A testing. And let's do this here. Did you happen to notice C P A came out, I think, just the other day, right? Just a couple of. Days ago with new. Um, recommendations on P P F O S and. P F O A levels. They lowered rather dramatically. Did you? Did you see that?
I didn't see it, but it was discussed at the last uh water department meeting that I attended. Um, and that was mentioned. They're going to do, I mean, fortunately, since we we've come out clean, we originally had to do quarterly reports. And now it's yearly reports. Um, and the next report, even though it says that it's due. At the end of the year, um, they're going to be doing them, I believe, either next month or in September. Because of the T H M S and H A A five, um, because of the due date on those. It's actually a much more efficient uh. To have many of these things done at the same time, sampling wise. So we should have results on, I think, all of these tests except for the lead and copper. In our probably October meeting.
Okay. And I think the last time we did have our P O O S and O A levels, it was. Am I mistaken? It was almost non-existent.
Yeah, one was zero and one was so low that it it was really um.
Okay.
Technicality to report it, but it had no bearing. And that's the reason that we were able to. Uh, get away from having quarterly, because it's these are expensive tests. And I think the public should know that we pay for these and um. It's it's not a cheap process.
Right. Um, and uh for the folks at home, uh, we are going out. Um, see if we can get a grant um to replace. Our uh salt shed. Um, all relates to water quality in our community. Um, we haven't noticed any issues as far as the salt and the aquifer. Um, but we we have noticed that the shed. Um, is starting to show uh a little bit of wear and tear. Um, the tank, uh, the water tank is being. Um, inspected. Uh, we're getting a quote on um painting. Right, Bill?
Yes, um, there'd been some informal um. Suggestions of what it would cost to repaint versus to replace. And just, but it's not cheap. Even repainting would probably cost six hundred thousand dollars. Um, and replacement is probably one to two million dollars. And it really has to do with how much longer. How long you can extend the life of the tank if you paint it. Um, because usual the life of one of these tanks is about thirty years and ours is about thirty years old. So. These are decisions that will have to be made once they get a clearer idea of of costs.
Okay. Christine. Pressure on you once again to try to summarize in two minutes the very lengthy recreation director's report.
Uh, okay, I'll talk fast. Um, the summer recreation program is uh up and running, very successful this year. Uh, lots of participation. Of course, we, there was a few days where it had to be closed um because of, you know, the heat and. We did unfortunately have had one COVID case. So, um, you know, uh. Proper protocols being followed for that. So. Uh, lots of uh general maintenance, ongoing maintenance happening. Um, you know, trees being uh. Removed as necessary, uh, new mulch put down in the playground area. Park pavilion, et cetera. The next big project that's happening. Uh, that's on the in the planning stages is um skate park improvements. Um, we're moving, looking at implementing phase two of the original plan for the skate park. Um, which would uh include. Um, five uh or new pieces of equipment in addition to the five pieces that are already there. Uh, and I guess the skate park is seeing a lot more um use these days. So it's it's looking like it might be time to move ahead with that. Um, all of the many uh summer programs uh that are using the park facilities are. Um, moving ahead and uh we're getting great feedback on a lot of the um. Improvements uh that we have made to the park recently. So that that's nice to see and nice to hear. I do want to just compliment our um rec. Department team. Once again, um, you know, we have some equipment there that is um, you know. Stretched in age and also in the way that we use them. So once again, our team came through. To repair one of our major pieces of equipment. Um, the parts that we needed, what is no longer available from John Deere, but they just searched and found it aftermarket and. Um, you know, leveraged there are the knowledge of our own team and actually one of the um. Of our community members also contributed to the project and donated his time to um. And install a lot of the uh the new parts. So thanks once again uh to them for doing, taking that on. Not only did, you know, it save us a lot of money, it also um is keeping uh a good piece of equipment still. Uh, in working, working form for us, which is also saving us money. Um, that's uh, we're we're gonna have our required Duchess County um. Um, visit to review the um. The rec park, uh rec program, rather, operations uh towards the end of the month. And uh. We also have the library programs are up and running by now at Saint Margaret. So lots of, as usual, lots of stuff going on. This is the really busy season for the rect for.
Great, thank you very much.
Did I make the, did I make the two minutes?
Um, uh, good enough for government work is the question, right? Thank you very much. Um, who's doing tree preservation? Is that also you, Christine?
That's me.
Oh, that's Jacob, okay.
Yep. So, um, these are the minutes from this month's meeting last week. Um, so. Pretty brief, but um there have been two new planted by signs that have been ordered. Um, the missing tree city sign has not been found. We talked about that a few months ago. Um, so the committee is going to order a new one to replace it. Um, there's been communication with the director of school facilities and operations at Red Hook Central School to find out his plans for work at Mill Road School. Um, so that will be good upcoming. Um, there's been a lot of discussion about um starting work on the town's tree inventory. Um, said something that occurred a number of years ago and is due for. Um, you know, a new inventory. So a possible training session is being explored. And I think there's a lot of interest from the committee in. Um, pursuing that and being involved with that. So that's really exciting. Um, and then, um. We have a member who is stepping down after many years of service, um, Eleanor Fury, who submitted her letter of resignation recently. Um, so I wanna thank Eleanor for all of her work. Um, in this committee and for our community. Um, so in that time, she's orchestrated and run the Mill Road School Program, including nature walks, tree plantings, and the annual poster contest. Um, she's been involved in the annual Arbor Day celebration and assisting with new plantings. Um, we're really hoping that. You know, she'll still continue to be involved, even if it's not as a member of the committee. But um, I just wanna. You know, echo the committee's thoughts. And I think I'm speaking for everybody and thanking her for her work in the committee. Um, I know that we have materials from um another community member who has been attending the past couple of meetings. And submitted a letter of interest in becoming a member of the committee. Um, so I don't know if we. Want to revisit that at the next meeting we have, or if we, I don't know if we're prepared to talk about that tonight, but. Um, that's another part of the the minutes here. So, um, I think those were included in the packet, but. Um, that's kind of the last thing here is kind of replacing that open. Uh, seat on this committee at this point.
Um, Jacob, if you wanna make motion that we have a resignation and a recommendation. Um, it would be a term that ends in twenty twenty-three.
Great, yeah, I'd love to do that if people are ready for that. So, um, yeah, so I'd move to um appoint. Alicia Reetma, I hope I'm not butchering her name, um, to that term, um, ending in twenty twenty-three.
Now, second, um. That motion, uh, all in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Christine Kane?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks, everybody. Glad to have that committee full. It's always um great to attend those meetings and hear the excitement and knowledge that they have on trees.
They're they're doing a great job. And I um, on a separate uh subject, met with the the Trails Chair today and. She has several people who wanna join that committee, so we'll look for um. Some update on that uh at a August meeting. Okay, dog control. Bill Hamel?
Always the most exciting, yes, the most exciting report of the month. Um. Despite the number being five for the month of June, uh, it really actually is sort of a light month. Um. We paid most attention to the dangerous dog uh category, because that usually involves dogs that have bitten somebody. And. I'm always happy to see a zero in that number. I I'm not shocked by two loose dogs because it is the summer and dogs get out of their fenced yards. But clearly, they were not um. Dangerous dogs. They didn't, you know, uh, and then someone probably just called in a complaint that the dog got out. A nuisance dogs are generally barking dogs. Cats, uh, they stray, but people should know that uh the Duchess County S B C A uh advised. That the county has about twenty thousand. That the county has about twenty thousand feral cats. It's a serious problem in the county. And um. These, you know, feral cats start showing up on people's properties. Um some people sort of try to take them in, some people feed them uh but. Complaints that come in on cats are often involving feral cats. So um and wildlife, there's usually some, you know, some issue about, you know, a skunk or somebody else getting into somebody's uh yard. Um and I'm not sure why the S P C A deals with it, but um but they they take the call and they'll trap an animal. And if they if they have to and release it into the wild. That's it.
We haven't heard anything about the disease that took out so many deer last year and the year before, right? So far, no reports from what I can, or I haven't seen any on the farm either.
No, my understanding is there was an episode of that about six years ago, I think, or seven years ago, and then it.
Oh, no, no.
Last year.
Last year.
Well, no, it was last year, but before that.
Oh.
Yeah, last year was terrible.
It keeps migrating uh more, more over to this side of the Hudson, yeah.
Yeah, so um and I know, I know that uh certainly affected, you could D C has stuff on their website about it. But um for people who hunt and and even as a food, an important food source for people, it was kind of devastating last year. Um but uh I actually have seen many more does and and fawns this season. At at least around where I live than I normally see this time of year. So I think they're coming back.
Very good. Um and licensing, Deanna, how are we doing on folks licensing when we? See those loose dogs and related um? Do they have tags and are they licensed?
I was just gonna ask that question. I don't, I haven't received any phone calls. Um it's from the S P C A. So I feel like I tend to think that they're not. Because the majority of dogs are really not licensed. Um.
That's not, that's not good.
I mean, we're working on it, but there's, you know, we get a lot of renewals. We we do get new licenses and the people that do are very responsible. But. Um yeah, I I don't, I don't know. The Duchess County S B C A usually will call um and ask us. If the dog is licensed and I, we haven't received any calls about this. I I was looking at that too for the past few months, actually.
Okay. Thanks, Deanna. Thank you, Bill. Um uh well, there's the uh expression of interest from Alicia. Uh I think we got a couple pieces of correspondence. I'll come back to this, but this is um another resident um contributing. Um thoughts about uh drainage. I know that uh the engineers are wrapping up the um engineering. Uh feasibility study um. For that development that was started in the fifties and sixties and certain parts of it have uh recurring. Uh drainage issues, obviously with climate change and the types of storms that we've. Been experiencing and experience, you know, folks have been experiencing all across the nation. Uh Saint Louis, uh I'm sure you saw the news yesterday. Um there's there's drainage issues throughout our community, but. Uh in particular, certain uh developments um where there's compact development near um, you know. Uh certain types of soils, okay, and water bodies. Um building and zoning, who's doing building and zoning, Bill Hamel?
Yes, uh obviously, it's a busy season, uh a lot of building going on in July, or at least, you know, up to today, there were forty permits. They did a hundred and twenty inspections. They've been very busy in the building um department. They issued thirty four certificates of completion or occupancy. There were three complaints. And the revenue uh for the month um for permits was thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty three dollars. That's bad. It's a very long report with lots of detail.
It's a huge report with details, so we don't uh. Obviously, we can't go into, but um on the detail. All right, very good. Well, um.
Hey, Robert, before we close, I just um in my role as liaison to the school district, I just wanted to mention that there will be. An opportunity for the community to get involved with Linden Avenue Middle School coming up. Um the middle school is installing a new playground structure. And um similar to what we did with the rec park playground a few years ago, they are inviting the community to take part in the building of that playground. Um the dates are August fifth, sixth, seventh, and twelfth. And anyone who, anyone can participate regardless of whether you have a child at the school. And anyone um who's interested can email. Lambs administration at R H C S D dot.
Thank you, Julia. Yes, that that's something that I uh wanted to mention. I appreciate your doing that. Um we may have a flyer. I know I've received something by email. If you do have a flyer, we could put it up on the bulletin board here. And perhaps even uh on our website to let folks know if they'd like to join in. A lot of fun building um the. Playgrounds in Rec Park. Um despite it raining six out of the seven days, it was just just a blast. So um. If you have skills, I'm sure um they'd enjoy seeing you. And I think you'll enjoy doing it. Okay. That said, that's all I have. Does anybody else have anything for tonight?
It's late for announcements, but can I just remind you all that uh the twenty twenty two Citizen of the Year uh nominations are open? And the the deadline is August first and the information's on the Rotary, Red Hook Rotary Club's website.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
And Christine, do you do you all know if you're doing it in person or you're sort of playing that by ear?
We will let you know.
Yeah, I have that. A nimble group, the Red Hook Rotarians. Okay, thank you for that announcement as well.
Thank you.
All right, um wish everyone a happy August. We'll see you at the end of the month. Stay healthy. And at this time. I would make a motion to close the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Christine. All in favor, Julia Solomon?
Hi.
Jacob Testa?
Hi.
Bill Hamel?
Hi.
Good night, everyone. Thank you again very much.
Thank you.
Good night.